And the final section is to put a hot mix mat on top of it. Okay, three, zero, 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 one, and zero, two. This one is the zero, two, which is the hot mix mat. Since we're going to take the federal money out of the high school road, we're going to do a supplemental and add motor fuel tax to it. So you're going to add your motor fuel tax a lot, and I think a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, if I'm not right. And then add a supplemental to the high school road. You've already passed the ninety-one-ten, maybe the former board, I don't even know. I think that was this board. We had passed three resolutions. So this is supplemental to use motor fuel tax. And to, so I don't get too long-winded to give you the nuts and bolts of this. Federal projects are very difficult to administer, incredibly difficult. And in talking with Francis and his associates in the city of Paris, it looks like we would be unwise to continue on the path we're on to use federal money on the high school road because there are still a lot of unknowns out there. My point being, the feds want to know six months in advance when you're going to let it and build it. And I'm telling you right now that we think we're going to put a hot mix mat on that as early as possibly this fall, but I'm not about just trying to start-
We're talking about the whole road?
Uh, just west of the tracks.
Okay.
Yeah, our, so, the nuts and bolts there is we want to have more control. We have control when we do local lets with motor fuel tax.
Well, I got a question.
Yes.
Isn't, are you anticipating most of the heavy construction work will be done by the time you do this, so that they're not, that they're not tearing that road up coming in and out of there?
Yes and no. What here's, here, the first yes is, for the most part, they don't go that way.
Okay.
I'd say ninety-nine out of a hundred come off a one.
Okay.
The heavy trucks and steel and all that stuff. So could it, could they possibly change their mind and come in from a different direction after this fall? The construction manager out there is still saying that they will have that high school done by Christmas. They're still saying that. Everybody doesn't believe it, but that's what they're saying. You know, other than moving furniture, they're going to give it the keys to the, to the administration but then have it. More importantly, Mike, the second half of that answer, more importantly, is as the road work becomes more important, the more that's done is the better. So if the city's going to do something in fifteen, it's going to be better that you're not trying to compete for, for road time, for lack of a better term. So that bridge, the bridge we built, couldn't have got it built soon enough. The widening that we're going to build out there, we can't get it built soon enough. And the hot mix mat that may go on it this fall, in my opinion, and hopefully yours too, we can't get it on soon enough. And the reason I say that is because I feel fairly confident, although the city said at the last meeting that they were going to be working on their side this year. I don't think so, but who am I to judge? So if they were very giving, and what I mean by that is if the city would say, tell you what, we want to build our side this year, we, we'd say, fine, we'll wait till next year. So it's a critical path staging. We think that we'd be wise to get our side done as quick as possible because I think it's going to be a race to get done on the other side. Is that answer your question?
I was just thinking if there's going to be a lot of steel and concrete coming in that direction, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense to put that on until after all that's done.
I totally agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I-
I think you, I, you've answered the question.
Yeah, we, we, as, as we stay here together and as we move through the construction season, you'll have the opportunity to voice your opinion. Like, I'm telling you, Mike, that I won't be asking you to, to award a contract to put hot mix down till, till fall.
Okay.
And at that time, you can say, I'll say I'm getting ready to let it, you say, ah, they, the school project was put on hold.
Yeah, it could be. We, we don't, till there's steel and concrete sticking up out there, you don't know what's going to happen.
There is.
Yeah.
There is. There is steel and concrete sticking up.
Okay.
For now, it's very, very dynamic. It's almost safer not to say anything. That's, that's kind of the position I've taken. But internally here, we plan on widening it this year and we plan on putting a mat on it in the fall. That's, that's just an internal discussion. We don't want to tell the public that because it's so dynamic.
Yeah.
I was looking at the camera when everybody's looking at me.
Number six is the fourth resolution for Wednesday. And this is the Heelands Dip federal contract that's finally ready to be signed. Doesn't, I just got off the phone with the chief of Land Act or the Land Act chief of negotiations, Scott Aron, the guy that approved our right-of-way acquisition. And now there's new troubles with how we're doing our right-of-way. So the lobbyists, appraisal lobbyists are wanting more work for the appraisers and they're working hard to make it so that the county engineer can't do right-of-way. And I'll just tell you right now, based on that phone conversation, it sounds like they're not going to be able to anymore. If they want me to take sixty hours worth of class work. So unfortunately, it sounds like even though they're going to pass this contract, this agreement, federal agreement to build Heelands Dip, you know, he says, I'm putting my license at risk. If, if DOT doesn't back away a little bit on that, it sounds like that project's going to be on old memory. And they'll have to go out and hire appraisers, appraisers. Any questions on the federal agreement that I'm asking the board to have been signed for the Heelands Dip? It's about a eight-hundred-thousand-dollar job. And there's about seven-hundred or so. It's ninety percent federally funded, about seven-hundred of its federal money. Money that we went and got in two thousand and nine. Questions on Heelands Dip? Anybody, Neil, you know about that job out there on the-
Yeah, I've talked about it before.
-safety location that we're trying to, trying to address? Three, four, five. The fifth one, which is number seven, is another agreement, a federal agreement. And this one's to pave the Horsockton Road. That's a June letting or an April letting, I think that's an April letting. And that starts at the corporate limits of Brockton, goes all the way to Route One. You're signing, you're giving Ben the permission to sign the federal agreement for that. Another pavement preservation job, inch and quarter over what's there.
Will we do a mat? Will we do a mat or a contract?
No, it's a hot mix. It's a thin-lip hot mix mat.
Which means?
Contractor, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't place hot mix.
Okay. When will you do it?
We got some with Cohots, hard to, hard to know. Let's see here, Horsockton Road, we're going to let it in April. We think we'll be out there in the height of summer, June, July. Any questions on the five resolutions that you'll be asked to support on Wednesday? With none, we'll move on to number eight, which is staffing and employment. We probably have the largest construction program in the history of the county this season. We've had a lot of big programs in the last couple of years, but this one's really big. And the folks that we have here that are doing the PI, which is project implementation, is Hanner. Hanner's really a, and then we're training Dirk Mohan and Josh Knight to fill the void when Hanner's gone. Of course, Hanner's been here forty years, I don't know if you guys know that. And I went out and I bought some seasonal people. So Jim Cooper, we hired Jim Cooper last year, old I-DOT guy, a lot of respect. All these guys out here, there's a lot of respect for their experience. Cooper, we hired Cooper back this year, had him here a week. And he sent us an email, says I'm getting my hips replaced. And you know, that's a slap in the face because we've got a huge program. I'm like, oh, brother, okay, well, we'll try to figure something out. I'll be out there morning. And then last week, Hanner announced that he's going to have both of his knees fixed or something. He's going to be out for a couple of months. So that puts us down to Josh and me. And I got, PI's probably one of my strengths, but what happens is it takes a lot of your time and I do a lot more than just construction engineering. So with that being said, I was trying to soften you up to the bad news because it gets political. It's not bad news, it's just something that you guys will probably hear about. Larry Cole is another I-DOT guy. He lives in Mattoon. He was the RE that built Seventy when they reconstructed the hundred-million-dollar Seventy job down there. I'd ask him to join us for five hundred hours until Hanner comes back. And the part that you're not going to like is, he needs a truck to take home. So I know with the sheriffs, chief deputy or whatever, there was a lot of heartburn about someone driving a vehicle out of the county. The only thing I can tell you is this is an emergency hire and that I've offered, I'm going to offer today, after I get in and talk with you guys, I've had him in here, I'm going to offer Larry Cole a five-hundred-hour contract. He doesn't want to work more than fifteen thousand dollars because of social security and stuff like that. Unless there's opposition this morning, and boy, I hope there's not, I'm going to offer him a five-hundred-hour contract until I get some of my people back on their feet. Is there any comment about one of your trucks going to Mattoon for two or three months? And the guy driving, that's a four-year veteran of I-DOT that's going to do our RE and-
They can't be charging you.
Yeah, but I guess they, yeah.
No comments?
That's going to, you know, give us some political heat probably, but I don't see another option for me other than the, we've talked about more craft, just run the office and you'd be in construction the whole time. So no comments on that because I'm going to offering that position? Now, to make matters worse, check this out. Champaign-Urbana and Champaign County, all three of those entities are building a hundred-million-dollar Olympian Drive in Champaign. And they're trying to get Cole and Hillard from me. So Hillard told me Friday, he didn't think he was going to do it, but... And I don't, I think if they took, and they're calling me, there's people above me that are encouraging me to give these guys up. If they take those two, I think we're sunk. I mean, I think I'm going to move into canceling some of these few projects because we just simply don't have the horsepower to handle that much work without help. So there's a small chance, so you don't get landbasted next time you talk to me. They're after Cole. And they're after Hillard, the guy that I've had for three years here. And if they get Cole, this conversation's kind of a waste of time. Any comments on that?
I think they were saying that one day.
I think you all ought to design a Plan B.
Plan Bs, me don't.
Instead of just throwing up your hand and saying we're, we're dead in the water.
Yeah, the Plan B, I don't like to share it. I don't like public meetings, to be honest. The Plan B, I don't like to say this.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, I don't like to talk about this stuff in public. I don't like to talk about it. The other plan would, would take me basically into construction full-time. And we've talked-
I find that terribly controversial.
I don't think it's controversial, I think it's detrimental for the department from a financial standpoint and planning.
On staffing, I know you, you hire seasonal help.
Yes, sir.
I, I would suggest, and I'm sure Mr. Zuber would incur, that you work with, with us, especially with Billy Gann, to make sure that we have been classified, we're doing all the things that we need to do so that we don't get into any issues.
Aaron and I talked a little bit about the idea of-
Okay, I'm not, sorry.
No, no, that's a good point to bring up, that's an excellent point because it's the issue of our part-time and how many part-time and how much part-time is going to equate you to more full-time. Our, our insurance guy just talked about this the last, last meeting.
We need to stay within our class-
We just have to, we're just going to get to a reporting situation where we're going to be reporting stuff for about six months to figure out what we're going to have to do for the year after that, so.
And that's a, it's very volatile. I would like to be, I'd like to have a breakout session with you sometime because what we're doing this year, we're, we're going to cut in half next year on staffing and I'm afraid that what we're going to look like this year is not the all we're going to look like next year. So we want to be careful. My, my primary questions are direct ones. Do we have a problem with seasonal help again this season?
No, as long as you've got all the i's across all the d's, then I'm, but like-
And whatever we have, we have, we're going to have to live with it. I mean, so if we make a determination of whatever type of employment that we have, we're going to live with it. That is, I understand it can have a little bit of flux with that. So even as you would change from one year to the next, our situation will change from one year to the next too. So it's not like, okay, if you're stuck here, then you're stuck there forever.
I don't think we need to be afraid of it. We just need to make sure that we're paying attention to what we're doing.
We're, we're very afraid. We, we rely on seasonal help a lot and, and we see this as, we would have a lot of internal discussions. We don't think that we'll be able to continue to operate the way we operate now next season and we don't intend to.
You guys need to, I'm just pointing it out so you guys can work out.
And I have a lot of questions I don't, I bet you, I bet you don't know.
No, that's one of the reasons that we have our insurance fee for. And that's what it's all about.
If I have people with insurance, that already have insurance, all I have to is offer it to them, right?
No, no, what I'm talking about, now we're on a different page there. I, I went from working part-time and how much part-time is going to equate into full-time and how many total full-time county employees we have.
Right.
You're, you're on two different issues there.
Well, I'm talking about the thirty-hour deal.
That's part of it. And that's part of the way your insurance is offered. And it's also part of the way that, that the county is going to be listed on what we have to do. So there's, there's two different angles going after this thing here.
Right, there's part-time, there's seasonal, there's full-time. I mean, there's several different classifications.
And then the offerings for all of those also.
Right, okay. The key is I have, because we're there, we've already got summer apps and everything coming in and we're already hiring back seasonal. The number one thing is that I have the county board's blessing to continue to behave the way we have in the past this season. And I do have your blessing, correct?
I, I think so. I mean, that's what we're doing right here. I mean, because we're, we're taking this all into consideration. If we're approving this, in my mind, we're approving whatever you're asking to do. And the ramifications fall back too.
Okay. You have any college gives, some?
Yeah, we do.
We just want to make sure you're classifying everybody correctly, keeping all the documentation that we need.
I'm not sure, Jeff, I'm, I'm not sure. Most of, the ones that bother me, there's just a few. There's a bunch of summer kids that come and the one, and there's people, old guys that already have insurance that are out here and stuff like that. There are some folks that I think that the new insurance plan is aimed to help that we can't keep. There are folks that are working more than thirty hours and don't have health insurance. And those are the ones that are, the ones that we'd have to offer health insurance if we keep, keep doing this.
You're correct.
And, and I don't think we're going to keep doing this.
Okay.
We can't afford it. Our budget can't afford that. This should be expensive. Okay, so anything else on staffing and employment? One other thing I want to share with you. There was some scuttlebutt in town that I had a position open out here. I had a dozen people ask me if they can have that job. James LaBord is our office manager coordinator. The young man that sits right here at the front door. James is contractual. He signs one-year contracts. He's, he does not, he's not offered full-time benefits. Our friend just, he has negotiated benefits package. James had gotten his degree and was going to move on. And I was in discussion with another department head about the possibility of sharing some help. And that department had apparently got a misunderstanding because I was playing him, which I do a lot of. James is going to stay. I'm going to give James a promotion and a raise. And he's going to, and he's signed a contract to stay for one more season. So the plan, which is likely, is that that position will go away. So I want you guys to know that James is going to stay for one more season. And training's unbelievable. That, that everything about that position's about knowing your way around this place. You could give me a PhD or a real high-level person to put in that position and they're six months, or they're three months away from knowing where things are at. So that's, that's why he is so attractive to us to keep, even though he's a young man just getting started. Any questions on that? That position is intended to go away in a year. Number nine, we're running out of time. So I just, I'm just going to go through this stuff faster and then I'll let you guys ask questions at the end. I want to race through this. Number nine, we're going to have a capital improvement plan meeting and a Trails and Greenways meeting at the Farm Bureau on the nineteenth. Alan, Alan's going to facilitate that. Two guys from Eastern Illinois are going to talk about their study that you guys approved. And then Architect's going to give his presentation on possibilities out by the school that involve county highways. And we're going to talk about, and then we'll have a question and answer session. That will go on the nineteenth at the Farm Bureau meeting. Very much encourage everyone to be there.
Not to prolong the discussion, but we've kind of been played as not being interested in this project and nothing could be farther from the truth.
Agreed.
We've put a lot of time and effort. What we did two study sessions ago was in no shape, form, a withdrawal or a lack of interest to that project, the Trails and Greenways. If anything, we're redoubling our effort.
Agreed.
And reading what we supposedly did, I couldn't recognize that or come anywhere close to understanding what people were talking about. And I'd like to make that clear. We have not done the final vote, but we're still charging towards that and in a proper way and I think in a professional way.
Absolutely agree, Jeff. So-
Yeah, I was, more than once, about three times.
And there was also an editorial on it, so it's just, at any rate, I, it just, not true.
I agree, yeah. That meeting's at four-thirty?
Four-thirty to six. There will be a timeline. To, to support what Jeff's saying, I, I have the first five minutes, that's all. That's what I want.
That's all they give.
That was a facilitator's choice.
What's so funny, Mike? You don't think I give that in five minutes?
No, you couldn't take them in five minutes.
Anyway-
He's writing that now.
My, my five minutes is timeline only. My five minutes is timeline only. And this county board has been very supportive since the day I walked in on this project. And you guys have passed multiple resolutions of support. You've spent a lot of money towards the planning endeavor. And even the eastern study, that's, that's, that this meeting's for, to conclusion of the eastern study, you guys kind of bared down and approved that contract, so.
Four-thirty though, right?
Four-thirty to six, three-nineteen. Hope you all will be there. It'll be followed by a capital improvement plan, CIP discussion, which this is our second one of those, we did that in twelve.
Bring Malderbs.
Malderbs, I think there's going to be cookies. Cookies and honey.
And that's all I-
I'm down to four minutes.
Number ten.
Number ten, we re-submit for grade crossing protection. So that could be a couple hundred thousand dollars to build the approaches on the high school road. We're waiting on the city to turn in their side. And for the record, on the high school road, so you guys know how to answer things, we're in here in Mountain Community, we're still waiting on the city to tell us what they're doing on their side. Number twelve, the TARP projects, I have it, don't have it in my hand, but Scotland Road and the high school road were both approved. I still don't have it at my hand, but I do have an email that says they were, so the FFF-
Oh, they were for TARP?
Yeah, so Scotland Road is approved and the high school road is approved. I've got the email from the guy instead of the memo, which surprises me. So those things are happening. Scotland Road, we're going to start shoulders. We could be up there today doing shoulders. And then we're not going to do, we probably won't get the plans even approved until later in the year, so. Sorry, give me just a second. Yeah, Scotland Road's probably, probably, the actual full build-out of Scotland Road probably won't happen until next season, but we'll be getting it ready this year. Kind of like every, every job we've done. Here we go, three minutes, lot to say. Local projects, Cherry Point Road cold mix is going to go this year. Kansas Bridge is going to start in a few weeks. Preston Road, two phases, we're going to put the big culverts in first and then build the road next year. Redmond Road, we're still seeking money on. We've surveyed it, we're designing it. Prairie's Edge out here, they're surveying it now. Survey and design, possible bike path. County Highway Twelve south of Kansas, we're going to repair the mess that's going to be made by them hauling stuff down to the bottom. And then we plan on doing some work down there at the big hill in, in a year or two. Vermillion Road cold mix, Mike, to finish that section that we finished with hot mix, that probably won't happen until next season, but we're working on it. Shiloh Road cold mix will happen likely this season. Scotland Road shoulders, like I said, you, in there will be action up there. Could be, they're already up there, we've got the material up there. We're going to start getting the shoulders ready to do that project. And then TARP resurfacing the following year. High school road widen resurface, we think we're going to do that hot mix this fall. If we can get environmentals cleared and get the plans approved, we'll start widening that road this spring and all through the summer. High school road bridge, we will grade that out and seed that and finish that as soon as the weather will permit. High school road crossing, we've turned in the big crossing protection funds. We've obviously got the Section 130 funds. We're waiting on a three-party agreement from the ICC. The Brockton Hazard Mitigation Plan, Bernard and Lockman and Associates has finished that study. Very exciting stuff there. Their possibility exists that we will seek money to make the roadway ditches safer and build a big detention pond on the north side of the town. That's, that's going to be a multi-jurisdictional effort that's wrapping up. That's pretty exciting for a multi-use path. We've talked about that, just so you know, the county's, what's under your jurisdiction starts down here at Sunset Park, goes all the way out to Prairie's Edge, turns down Cherry Point and goes over to school along the roads. There's a lot more of those to it than that, but that's what the county's current role is. Any questions on local projects?
You're talking about from the, on the Vermillion Road, from the fertilizer or from the elevator south is what you're talking about?
Vermillion Road's five-hundred where the hot mix stopped.
Okay.
And it's going to come all the way to town. It's going to go around that corner. That corner's going to get vastly improved. And so it's called Main Street that goes the elevator. That'll be improved. It'll turn the corner. Is it Church or Water? I keep forgetting. The first intersection, I think, is Water.
Okay.
And that intersection will be improved. You can see it, it looks like, it looks that way now. And then when you get in that section where it narrows down, there's sidewalks and people are parking on the road and stuff, that won't get improved for now. That's in design.
Okay.
Any questions on local? Federal program update, science projects, we're thinking will be done in April. That's going real well. Kansas Ike Underground, as soon as the weather breaks, B and T will be back out to finish up their little bit of work. They've got some grading and seeding to do and then they'll be done. Kansas Ike Resurfacing, Voight's got that project. They're supposed to start April first. That's a pretty exciting job. We still are working with DCEO on the IJN money, but it looks like that's not going to be a problem. Heelands Dip, I'm hoping for summer. I just heard some bad things about right-of-way acquisition. That's going to have to be addressed, which might put it off yet again. Farnham's Bridge is still on for a June thirteenth letting. That's a, a very, very large project that requires right-of-way. We're knocking some trees down by April first because the Indiana Vats like to start breeding April first. If we don't have them down by April first, we have to win a year on that. The major bridge projects, that big project out in Sims, it's going to go in June fifteenth. We're in right-of-way acquisition right now on that. We have a coordination meeting with federal highway administration tomorrow. Lower T at, uh, major bridges. Lower T at Walmart is let. We haven't had a pre-con. Contractors this time of year with hot mix plants tend to try to get their plates full before you file the plan up, so I can't give you a date on when that'll start. If he gets enough work, he could start tomorrow. If he doesn't, he could delay it. May first is when working days start, so he can't start any later than. If he's not done by June first, he'll be getting liquidated damages. Lower T at Walmart's going to start in the spring, I don't know when. Clinton Road Urban was opened, it came in under very competitive bids. Howell got it, they beat Nico out. So Howell's going to be doing the Clinton Road project. That starts east of the tracks and goes all the way to Eads. That will start this spring as well. Horsockton Road, we've already talked about that. You've got an agreement that you're going to sign on that. That, that letting is next month. It'll, it'll be going on about the same time. Cherry Point Road hot mix asphalt, oh, Cherry Point Road from Stidle Tracks all the way up to the new high school road, it's going to be hot mixed. It's a June letting. County Highway One, US one-fifty to Clinton Road, we talked about that already, that's on here. That's probably a June letting and will be done in the fall. Any questions on federal program? With none, is there any old business that you guys would like to discuss? Any new business that we all like to discuss? New, anything new? Any new insurance? And any public comment? And with none, just need to, thank you, Jeff.
You're pretty good.
Starting our meeting right now. Up, so-
Did you guys pass the multi, or the assessment resolution? Was that the last meeting? Was that the last meeting? Do you have any idea why we went a blanket number for all the years versus a different rate for quadrennial here? Because the other three years, we spent all the money for GIS, so we could do it from the office.
I discussed that, but I don't remember what the, I think that was, I don't remember.
No problem.
Just don't.
I think it was just an average, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure it was the average, I just thought we'd suck it up then, but I don't, we'd have to ask, we can ask Beverly at the meeting to describe that.
Any other public comment? Committee reports. Alan, do you want to...
Yeah. Okay. Budget-wise, you all got a copy of the budget, as of right now, everything has been closed out. And, I'm sorry, I thought it was mine for a second. At any rate, everything falls into under budget or right at, except for income. Income always lags behind until the very end. The only department that might show a overage since we've got thirty-three percent of the year gone is administrative, and that's because of front load from Manitron and some of the other deals that we do and pay out on a yearly basis. But we're at roughly twenty-six percent of the year, I'm sorry, twenty-six percent spent versus thirty-three percent of the year. So we're, we're doing not too bad. Our cash flow is good, and that's important. We keep making strides there, as done as reported to you. Let's see. Fees, talked to the two departments involved, and with everything, the voting and everything going on, the finance committee will take that up right after the election and hopefully have something for the board at the next meeting, if that's okay. On your agenda, you'll notice leases on there. The building, I talked to the Mosses, we're going to approve a lease for that building that the Mosses are used, so we'll have something official in writing in lieu of them maintaining that building. The other leases are out and being signed. Brad Tucker's lease for farm ground includes the other building, and he will negotiate with Dale so that we can put some of our equipment in that building also. He's more than amenable about that, but that's all out and taken care of. So by, here in a, not too long, a few days, maybe a couple weeks, we'll be all set on that. We do however need to discuss, and the chairman, and I've discussed it briefly, on how we want to handle farm leases for next year, and leave that up to the chairman to discuss. Let's see. Do you want me to handle the airport list? Okay, on your agenda, you will please note that we are going to ask to advertise for airport manager. We feel like we're at a point where we should be doing that, and, and starting to seek applications and go from there. The bids, we advertised for, not bids as much as proposals for the commercial operation out at the airport, and we received one in per the description of, of the, of the public notice, and that was from Jim Mills, along with financial considerations, so that we can take a look at that whole thing. Did you have anything you wanted to add, or do we need to, considering the sensitivity of lawsuits and everything else, Mike, did you want to discuss anything about what you, how you perceive where we're at on that?
Not this time.
Okay, all right. So those are the things that have been going on as far as the airport. And of course, everybody's got the letters that we got from Alactic, and we discussed that last time, and so onward and upward is what they say. Do you have any questions in me at this time?
Yeah, on the farm ground...
Yes, sir.
We're basically going to have to bid it out, of course, the state's attorney, but that's...
Correct. He has made those, that description, though the highest amount that we get from any one farmer is roughly twenty-one thousand eight hundred. So I don't know, I think we need to talk to him again, give him the breakdowns, and see what he suggests again. And I think, maybe you have something formal, I, with all these, yeah, with all these issues, I'm unable to, I can't remember what, where we stand on that. I think, in fact, that we, if we bid the whole farm out, we're getting to one, to one bidder, we'd be talking well in excess of thirty grand, obviously, because that's the way it is right now. So I think the board needs to...
And if, and if it's like bidding on a project...
Right.
You can't split a project to make it under, but, because that's kind of...
And, you know, and I recognize...
Legally, you can't.
Right. And I realize there's some reluctance on the part of certain board members to, you know, to put us in that position. So, you know, the airport committee will do what is directed by the board.
How many acres are we talking about?
Two hundred and, two hundred and ten.
Is one person farm all that?
No, there's three, three different farmers. Darren Craig, Dyers, and then Brad Tucker.
How do you split it up?
It was split up a long time ago, and I'm not sure how it was done then, but, like Brad has a hundred and nine acres, and Dyers have the next biggest amount, which is eighty-some acres, and then Darren Craig, I think, has four acres, only because he farms some ground down there, and that just wraps up that field, okay?
So you got cash rent contracts now?
Yes.
When are they?
They're, February twenty-eighth of next year. We have one end to effect from March first through February twenty-eighth.
Do we have to let them know that we, that...
We have to let them know in September, first part of September.
September, okay.
Right.
So you've got this year covered?
This year's covered, okay? So, and we couldn't do anything with those leases now, because if you change stuff, it's not, it's contrary to state law, you can't just start modifying lease agreements past a certain point. So we've got till fall, but I don't think we all want to wait till fall to figure out what we're doing. So you want me to...
The airport committee will take care of...
Right, and make the recommendation.
Right, make sure, talk to the state's attorney, make sure that we're in agreement on that, and...
Right.
I don't, there hasn't been any problem with the, with the people that are farming it.
No.
And we basically didn't have a problem, except that the state's attorney has said we have to...
We'll, we'll talk to him, and we'll make sure that the board has correspondence, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
Well, the rents need to be reasonable. I don't know what they are now, I'm not saying that they're not.
They're two hundred an acre, and of course, what you'd normally do in a lease would just put in bed whatever they wanted, assuming that you would still get two hundred, but it could be crazy. I mean, we could make more money.
We could make less, too, right?
Right, well, yeah, but I...
Anything else?
Not at this time, I've got some stuff when we get to your report.
Dan?
We got meeting news, I really don't have much. I know it's one thing in the last minute, said the new door's been put in, but I don't think it has. That was a mistake I'll, you mentioned today. I did have a phone call from a concerned citizen, I'll share it with the committee in the days. Other than that, it's been required.
Dale?
I hand out some information on the last PICO meeting I talked about yesterday, and I suggested a paper of print, and...
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
I don't think the city has really made a final decision on what you're going to do on the high school road. Either. You want to talk about the ambulance now?
We'll come back to that. All right, if you want, we'll be fine.
You looking at me?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Uh, Ed, it looks like we're going to go ahead and appoint Jill Taylor as coordinator, and she's got several applications, I haven't seen them, I don't know if Jeff has or not yet, for people that would be, I guess we're going to call it the assistant coordinator.
Or office manager.
Office manager, what?
Slash.
Yeah. We'll, we'll have to take a look at that. Question, there, there's, you correct me if I'm wrong here, we have, we're going to, we, we're going to ask that the board enter into an agreement, an intergovernment, is it proper to say intergovernmental agreement?
Yes.
With the city slash fire department, they've got, just so you guys got some background on this, they have a training building out here towards west of town, and the, Ed's the coordinator was asked, thought we might be interested in, they would like to use that as a warming or cooling center, and the city has agreed tentatively that that would be a good idea. Problem is, the city wants us to kick in for a, a generator that they've already bought, and we're, and our agreement is to, we're going to do the install, now up to four thousand dollars. And then, I think it's a seventeen...
Twenty.
It's a twenty? What, what would you say would be reasonable for parts and installation on something like that? I'm, I'm just asking you because you're...
I'd have to look at it and see where, where it's going to be located with reference to the gas line and the power line.
Does it run off of natural gas, though? Um, propane or natural gas, and...
Yeah, can be either one, I'd write that.
I just don't know whether, I just don't have the, know whether that four thousand is even reasonable, that we need to agree to something that's, that we might be getting overstretched on here. Is that our part of it, you say? Well, that would be our part, we'll, they'll buy, we'll pay for the, for, for an electrician to come install the generator and the override, the switch, the automatic switching.
Actually, they got a bid for that, it's five thousand some dollars, I see.
Well, the, the agreement that you have in the package does not reflect what we're working off of. Item three, and Aldean might be updating on where we're at, but it says Ed's shall be responsible to reimburse the city of Paris for the actual cost of installation not to exceed four thousand dollars. That's the way, and, oh, it does say it, I'm sorry.
I gave you the updated one. It's all right, you can throw me on the bus with everybody else.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a bus thrower. So at any rate, that does reflect the correct way, okay? And it was sent to the state's attorney to take a look at, and I, we just had, we went back and forth, what, twice or three times trying to get paragraph three correct, because initially it said, uh, cost of an installation. So we were just going to pay the four thousand dollars.
Mr. Allen has a question.
Were you guys aware they got grant, a grant for those, that installation? That's all grant money to pay for all that.
Our understanding was that they got a grant for the, according to what we've been told, a grant for the purchase tooling of that unit.
To buy it, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you know what that grant figure is?
I can find out, but it was for all the fire protection districts, all the firehouses under Paris Fire District, to include their fire training center, and it was a one hundred, the grant was a, I believe, a ninety-ten grant, that they got.
That brings up something we better discuss.
Right.
Because what we're afraid of, guys here, is that, well, Kansas, Brockton, rightfully so, anybody could come and say, wait a minute, you guys installed a generator for, for Paris, what about us? We want to build a warming center, we may have a grant, we may not have a grant, we may have extra money to do, but hey, you did it for them, why won't you do it for us? I'm not saying that's a bad idea, but, you know, buck here, you know, two, three hundred thousand dollars later, you know, I'm, I'm exaggerating, of course, but I, I don't want to get obligated to, to do that for everybody in the county.
Without, without going into it with our eyes open.
Right, right, but this is news I was not aware of, that that grant was already paid for. Or it's already been awarded, and that they may have that money.
Well, their, their share is ten percent. Right, so we'd be underwriting part of their share.
Okay.
Their share, putting the generator and all the fire...
Well, I'm saying that, you know, if it was all-inclusive, and say it was a hundred thousand dollar grant, and they had to come up with ten grand, we're helping them with four of it.
Well, here's the other thing, too, does anybody here on this board or anybody in the room reasonably think that Paris would say, no, you can't use it as a warming or cooling center in an emergency? I, I mean, I wouldn't think that they would do that anyway. I, I want to do our part.
I was assuming that this was a recommendation from you guys, Ed's.
It is at this point. It is, yeah, it is a recommendation. We're just discussing it further...
Okay.
...in view of additional information. Our coordinator came to us, asked us to consider this, we worked on an agreement, and we're presenting it to the board.
I just want you to know the whole story is...
I think it's five thousand something.
Is it?
Be it.
Okay, I know you can't give...
Those switches are...
Oh, I know, I, I could install two, three of them, but really didn't pay any mention, too much attention to what they cost. Thirty-five K it was, it was...
For the switch?
Yeah, for the, yeah.
At any rate, it's going to be on the agenda.
It's not something for you, well, cheaper than that.
Just for you.
I've got your number.
Yeah, where are you going?
I think it's important everybody understand the ramifications of what our...
Well, then, do we, what do we need to, do we need to go ahead and agree then?
Well, we'll double-check a couple things, I mean, I mean, we're still on the agenda, and the board can turn it down.
You can give us a report, what you find out.
Well, I'm going to be on the phone with the fire chief here in just a little bit.
There we go.
And see what's going on.
Right, just, that's cool.
Because if that's, if that's the deal, if they've...
Alan?
Basically, kind of know back from Travis Bush, he appreciated everybody's questions, if they have thoughts or what, and he urges more and more, he said, because it's the Affordable Care Act is going to be a constantly changing, floating type thing, and so if we have questions to ask, basically, they have, you know, Amy and Carrie, they're kind of designated for us, and appreciates close working relationship with early and Augie. County clerk's office are still working on more issues there, for our purposes, making sure that highway department knew that the coordination asked around there. And they've already said, started getting some stuff back and forth a little bit, so we'll see where it goes. But he did appreciate everybody being here and the questions they had, it's a long process. Said he apologized, as if it takes so long, but he said it could have taken two more hours.
Anything else?
Has everybody looked over the agenda, has there any questions for McWinstock?
We need to discuss, contract, bid, for ambulance.
Well, we talked to the state's attorney, the one you have a friend to do this, the latest revised bid specs. Yes, the third paragraph says county does not have to accept a loss bid due to serious or service being associated. Successful bid should be mentioned as a cost-effective and irresponsible bid. Number one, on the first page, we changed the five years to three years, we're mainly just looking for experience, so I don't think that will include anybody that's bidding, but I don't know that I'm sure that we can still change that. We can still change that.
All right, listen, you got it?
I don't think that happens.
It's not about, no, it has to be on the board.
No.
Well, I thought you put it in, I thought you said you made copies, I'm sorry.
I did make copies to give to everybody. I thought you already gave everybody copies.
Yeah, once you said that, I didn't, I don't know.
I'm sorry.
I've been on here for so much.
Anybody else?
I got one.
I haven't given one.
You haven't got one?
This seems one email, doesn't it? Yeah, I, I, I wanted to email just to even show I'm sure. Alan, I lost your email, I guess.
And I got your email this morning from Sunday, and I did forward that on to Alan at eight thirty this morning.
Did you get it?
No. I didn't really check it, eight thirty this morning.
Eight thirty, huh?
I, I wanna go over number one. I don't see any reason to have any years in there. We didn't, or there wasn't any years for the, the one that's running it now, and there wasn't any years for the one previous. It was, it needs to be put in there qualif-, how would you put it, qualified?
Demonstrated ability.
Yeah, so something like that, right.
Three years, even the one from Christmas, I'm not personally-
They've been licensed for one year. Now, the director that runs it has been licensed for four years, but not the actual entity.
I checked, it's been one year. Wanted to tear a hose, probably been longer, but that's, they're still interested, but I can't see going out of county and get an ambulance service. That's my point. If they have decent-
I, I can't either, but the original tax law's precluding anybody from-
I understand that.
And- And I had a note, and apparently, nobody else thinks this is worthy of putting in there, that they should be paid quarterly rather than annually.
Well, there's still discussion on that, and I know you talked to the treasurer, and I did too, and he sent a rather lengthy email, which I think we both got. And there's still some confusion on that, but the treasurer's basically paying the ambulances, once he's received the tax money, which makes sense. The ambulance maintains very year behind on that with the levy.
I reviewed that this morning.
And I don't believe that's true.
It is not true. And the treasurer doesn't have any problems if we wanna split it into four payments.
We, we can split it, but I, I don't want us to ever get in a position where we have to borrow money to make a payment. I don't think we should pay any money until we have received it.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
So, I think we're on the same page, but I don't know if you wanna put in there specifically quarterly or not. That's what, what I'm asking for. You just split it into four payments, and for some reason, you're gonna have to pay that second tax levy. On time, then we wouldn't have much choice but to borrow money, we're gonna borrow money.
Right. Well, we do have a hundred and eight thousand dollar fund that you could take it out of it. We'd be borrowing from ourselves.
Now, I have no attorney, but I've talked to the state's attorney about that, and the treasurer. You really wanna keep that money over here, I won't, I hate to say you're any day fund, but if either party would get out of the contract, that's your money to get, to maintain a service.
Can't do anything else with that money.
I understand, I'm just saying, we can't take it and use it in the general fund or anything, but it would be, it would be secured by the tax, taxes that were left.
Yeah.
I'm not, I-
I would just hate to do that, and I don't think the, whoever runs ambulance is going to object to getting the money when, as soon as we can get it to them. But if you draw the line quarterly, maybe for some reason we'll stop there.
We usually get about sixty percent of our levy in-
Yes.
-by the second week in July, which is still in the first quarter.
Four payments is fine, though, right? Paying four payments rather than staying quarterly.
If that's what the total work, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what's possible and what's not. I'm not giving you an editorial on how I-
Maybe this'll be a time to inject, not to interrupt you, but-
You're fine.
Just so there's no misunderstanding here, I've, I'm not advocating, never have I advocated, that we do away with an ambulance service. One of the things that bothers me, and I talked about this with Dave, is, I'll give you a scenario here. We are responsible for the levy and making sure it's administrated properly. How do we know, I'll give you an example, let's say ABC Ambulance Company comes in and gets this bid from Ohio, and they, they, they comply with all the bids, they move here, they establish a, during, in the first year, ABC banks a million dollars. Are, is that fiscally, are we fit being fiscally responsible for, for not assessing the levy and seeing if, I, I mean, where, where do we draw the line? We're, we're on kinda, in my opinion, we're kinda on thin ice because we're a county dealing with a, a, a business, a private business. So, is it okay for us to give the taxpayers money to, to somebody, somebody that in essence doesn't need it? I'm not asking, I'm not saying that-
That's what bidding's process is for.
But how, that's what I'm saying, what are we bidding on here?
We're bidding on what the next, what they'll do it for and what the next levy will be, based on the, based on what they're bidding they're gonna do this for, for the next five years.
So, we don't care how much they make? That's what I'm saying. I mean, is that right? Is that, is that-
Correct.
Because I don't wanna, I don't wanna assess the county-
Yeah, that's correct.
Three hundred thousand dollars a year, so that some private company can make a million dollars.
That's what we're doing right now.
Okay.
I mean, that's, whatever they say they, in the bidding process, hopefully, uh, you'll get a better price. You may get the same price, but it won't be over what we can levy, because that's set by referendum, it's already set.
Well, if we-
We can levy less, but we can't levy more than we are right now.
Right, and what I'm saying is, are we, are we not prudent? Are we not doing our job? Are we not doing what's right for the taxpayers by levying less if the ambulance company is making enough money? And I don't know how to determine if they're making enough money. I, I wanna do-
That's what the bid is. They're gonna, you're, you're going to have more than one person bid.
Okay.
And they're gonna be saying, this is what I can do it for.
But, but I think Mike makes a good point. From, from the beginning, whoever ran the ambulance, it was more or less a private contract. And we never asked, nor could we, I don't believe, with privacy, for an audit financial statement from whoever was bringing the service. Now, I did see some records from the hospital was running it.
And we do, and we do.
Basically saying, we're not making any money at X dollars. When Provena got out, they were the same way. They handed the papers right across the table and showed Adana and I at the time, that they weren't making any money. But I think he makes a good point. The levy's gone from, went around the numbers from two hundred and twenty thousand to today's value of about three hundred and nineteen. And I think his point is, if somebody comes in here and can do it for two hundred, are they gonna just bank that one hundred and nineteen? I don't know how we ever answer that question.
Who, who's gonna bank that?
Well, I'm just saying, if they're making money, his point is, should the taxpayers be paying that extra amount?
Whoever can.
No, if, if they bid at two hundred and nineteen, then they are bidding for five years. The first year's levy, we've already done. That's, but then we adjust the levy from then on, correct? Which, we bring the levy down to two hundred and nineteen.
But they do have a right to make a living, I mean-
Well, sure, but how, how-
Yes, yes, and they don't like to make a profit.
I'm not arguing that, but I'm, I'm saying, are they, do they have a right to make a profit with the taxpayers' money?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just throwing that out. I don't, I don't want the taxpayers making somebody rich.
I don't have to be rich.
No, I don't think anyone that's renting ambulance is making a killing.
That's, but, but I mean, are we, are we just taking their word for it, or do we need to?
Well, we, we're not asking for an audit financial statement, and we really can't do that.
That's what, that's what the bidding process is about. The bidding process is to get the best price for the best service.
If, if anything, I think the most important part, or one of the most important parts, is number two, financial stability, and what we're asking, we wanna make sure, and I appreciate what you're saying, too, I, I, I don't think that's the issue, but we've gotta protect the taxpayers. The taxpayers in the seven townships have already said this arrangement is satisfactory. And if we start getting into what's too much and what's not enough, and, I mean, I don't, that's a slippery slope that-
Exactly.
And I, but I totally respect what you're saying, that the taxpayers need to be protected on the deal.
Right.
But protected-
Cause we know it sold for quite a bit of money when Mr. Bergen sold it, to the, to the, to the current buyers, so it had some value. And the value would be, it produces money, it's a viable business.
And I think, when you look at the equipment, that whoever, who's been operating it, and who will operate it in the future, I mean, it's astronomical. I mean, it's, it's like buying airplane parts for the federal government. I mean, it's just, everything is double checked and specially made.
Eight hundred dollar hammers.
Well, well, I'm just, it is just mind boggling, if you've talked to Mr. Shaughnessy, what can, has to be spent just to maintain the equipment and the leaps and bounds that medical technology has, has done.
We've asked for a minimum of two million dollars with the liability insurance. Yeah. Which I think's a good idea to ask, I don't know if that's-
Is there anything that, did you look at bonding besides the, the credit line?
No.
I mean, is that something that's done, or?
I, I don't think so.
Okay.
Well, the bonding would be a for sure thing, the credit line, the bank would back out, saying, no, we changed our money.
We had looked at some other ambulance service agreements.
Okay.
And that is really where the five years came from. That seemed to be, I hate to say an industry-wide standard, but that seemed to be the standard in most agreements, is five years. But I know what you're saying here, if we put five in there, we're, maybe we're cutting out a couple people, and we don't wanna do that.
Well, when they bid it, not, not the actual length of the agreement, you're talking about experience.
Yeah, that, that was, that was, I would say, the average in every contract that, that we saw.
Also, we've got, no, we've got everything written down that we expect from them, we don't have a place for them to say, I want a hundred thousand for the first year and three percent increase, or anything like that, for their, in their, or how we're gonna propose.
Yeah, we, we can change what you want, take the three years out, put in demonstrative ability or what we look for.
And nothing-
Probably demonstrative ability is, I call it a lawyer weasel words.
Well, I do too.
Well, it's not a concrete thing. I mean, I can say, he's got demonstrative ability, or I can say you, and it's just my opinion that they have demonstrative ability.
Doesn't that what it boils down to, and what the state's attorney has said, is that we need to level the playing field for everybody to bid it, but it's, it is totally a subjective process on, on selecting the individual or company-
In other words, it's not all calculated on price.
No, it can't be. Somebody may bid a hundred thousand in tax money, and we turn around and accept the one that wants the full load.
Right.
I mean, it depends on what we feel, is that right to, I mean, who's gonna give the service to the county?
Yeah, but again, rate, rate number one, contractor must have been a continuous business as a licensed paramedic ambulance service provider in the state of Illinois that we've seen the last three years. I'd be more comfortable to put that one year, if you want, and leave everything else in there. Cause I agree with that, I don't like just demonstrative ability.
That's fine.
I think you should have been a licensed paramedic for at least one year to bid on this, and I think most of them will be. But, that's what we're here for.
Even though I'm not a weasel.
Yeah, you know.
We're not gonna take a vote on that. Mike? Dan, would you be comfortable with one year there? Just change this rate?
I would.
Or any other?
My only argument against that is, you, that has not been what, what we've required for the past two of them. We required nothing from the past two of them. Am I right?
Well, maybe that was a mistake, yeah.
Well, it's worked out, though, hasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
We, we didn't have a lot of choice the first time. To be quite honest. We, we needed to have a service, and in fact, the only service that we could would be jumped in there. But, uh, I think we're farther down the road now. I think we can say, you want one year, or even the three, to show that you've had some experience. I don't think that's too much to ask, to say you've been licensed for a year. We, as Dan says, we don't wanna lose the service we've got, and I'm gonna tell you, Dee and Eric have, have set the bar pretty high, and it's been an excellent service. Not very many glitches at any time. I think we're very lucky to have the ambulance service, but we have, and I don't wanna lose that. As I said before, I don't really want somebody coming in here, based on tear load, we're gonna set an ambulance here for forty-four hours, but the second one's gonna come out to tear load over Charles in Big City.
And, and this makes it where they can't do that.
Yeah, so, I mean, these are the specs, and hopefully, whoever bids can meet them, and if they can't, like Alan said, they're not gonna be able to call somebody, well, you know, give me a hundred thousand tomorrow and we'll, we'll start the service. That's what we're here for, is to, is to discuss, to discuss it, but I agree with Alan, if you put demonstrative ability in there-
Define that.
Five six attorneys on both sides of that. This, if you just make that one year, I think it, it pretty much spells out exactly what you want. I don't know what else to say. If someone that wants to bid calls up and says, I don't have my license for one year, but I've been in the service business for five, ten, or twenty, okay, maybe that needs to be changed, but I don't know how you- If you put demonstrative ability or something else in there, I think you're gonna have two hundred word explanation for that. I don't want anybody to, to look at this, and, I mean, it looks simple on the, you know, it, it looks simple on the surface, but it, it, I think it covers everything, and I hope it does, we've been over and over. So, if someone can't just pick one phrase-
The state's attorney looked at it and said, that's great.
I, I, I sent him the email of this, too, with the, with the changes, and I haven't been able to-
Oh, okay.
I intend to talk to him today or tomorrow, and, again, if this is all the changes you want, and everybody's in agreement, I'd like to get a little talk.
Well, I have one other, I do, I do. My question needs to be in there. We know that they need to have, the business needs to be located in Paris. But owning the building, what's wrong with leasing the building? That's the only thing, the only other thing I, I, there's no doubt it has to be located here, if you just text it.
Well, we didn't say Paris, we said in the special service area, so it could be in the 7.
Yeah, the owner, the township. Paris is where the biggest population is, it makes sense, I would think.
Well, the last time we discussed this, the point was made, you could lease a building, and then somebody break the lease on it, what would you do?
Right, I mean, they could rent something for a year, and then decide, well, this rent's costing us too much money, we'll just-
We'll just what?
We'll just, we'll just move out of there.
Since they prefer this contract. You know, they have to be in the location that-
Well, we're, they kinda got us over in Maryland, cause we don't have anybody else to replace them, we can't just whistle up and say, number two show up tomorrow. I, I'm, I see what you're saying, but I think we need as much stability as possible.
I think I agree a hundred percent.
And, and I, I want them to be financially, and, and, you know, I don't want them to think, well, maybe we can do this. When they show, when they walk in and they plunk down cash and buy a facility, an office, and, and we do have that, that tells us, yeah, these guys are serious. They've got an investment in it. That's just my opinion, though, guys, I mean, I, I don't wanna, I wanna be fair.
Well, that's my opinion, too.
If I can go by, though, in, in reference to that, I could probably go buy a building and not pay for it. It's technically kind of my building, and if I never make any payments after four months, then I'm in your, then I'm with Ben on the lease part. I know, I'm just playing a little bit devil's advocate, but that's what we're playing here.
I thought you were whispering.
I mean, I've, I've seen.
You've done that before.
See, no, I haven't done that before, but I've had people do that before.
You can walk away from a building that's owned as long as walking away from a lease.
We think that's what you're saying, you're, it's the same thing.
I mean, it's, I mean, that's where you've gotta look at the character and-
I wonder if that, if that's an issue, whether it's the bond issue, is the bonding issue is just as important as making-
That's why, I, I mean, I just thought of that late, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to come to- That's why I, I mean, I just thought of that late, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to come to the table with something that's.
No, that, that's fine. I, I think the line of credit would take care of that. We can run that by the state's attorney. I'd be happy to. I'm asking about that.
So you wanna put, you're saying bonding, I don't quite understand what you, what you're talking about here.
Well, what we're talking originally was a performance bond. If the people that you're, that you're worried about walk away, this bond, the insurance will have to pay.
Right.
To have the service still here.
They are a contractor.
Right.
Okay, so think of it from that standpoint, that we need as much financial stability as we can get. Or that we should, you know, that's prudent.
The downside of a bond is, if there's a downside, is it costs them money and they're gonna roll that into the price of it. I mean, it's gonna cost them part of the.
Absolutely.
And maybe quite a bit, I don't know.
I don't know what a performance, I mean, but that's immaterial, that's really.
Right.
Performance bonds, I got one for the state of Indiana for doing business over there. Quite a bit of, it was like a hundred and eighty-four dollars, but, you know, me being a plain character is probably.
You're saying Alan couldn't get one?
What was the character?
What kind of character?
The character?
Cartoon, cartoon character.
I'm gonna be the three seventy-six one. I know, I know.
Anyway, historically, bonds are about different.
Well, they were in the grain business, 'cause I got a bond for next to nothing, and then when they changed the law.
It was more than.
It was insane.
Is it really? Well, I'm just talking fuel here.
Yeah.
I've just got four little.
Fueling a bond for five hundred bucks through L H for years in the state of Illinois, like, no, we won't accept that. But the choice was to get in the grain insurance bond, that's all we did.
So you're gonna check into that, we're gonna change it from one year.
Performance bond.
What are the changes that we've set?
I would like to change it to one year if I'd agree with everybody.
You're gonna check into the bondish, or the bonding situation under two. Right?
Yes.
And then the rent deal, whether, or we lease it or own it.
I, 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 that's what I was asking, where we stood on that, I guess.
I will ask the state's attorney's opinion also.
Okay. And then you're gonna put in there something about what are they, how much of the tax, are we, how are we gonna word the tax? Because even the state's attorney refuses to that issue.
In his, in his.
His deal, in other words, the whole idea is to create a competitive market to test the levy and to provide the board a basis on, to rely upon in fixing the levy.
Well, Augie, I defer to you. I, I assume anyone that's public record could call you today and say, what is the amount of the ambulance levy?
Sure.
That's public information. So, I wouldn't bid on this myself if I was bidding without knowing.
What they, what they could get.
Yeah.
I think anybody that would bid would do that.
If this board wants to change the levy, what's the procedure to do that?
Next year, we just change.
And the board just.
Pass the levy.
Yeah, we can drop the levy. We can't raise it more than it is, 'cause it's at the maximum.
You can raise it without a referendum.
We don't have to get permission from the townships?
Yes.
With a referendum?
We'd have to have a referendum, it's almost like a question.
Okay, okay, I thought there was something rather than.
Yeah, we can't make it for more than.
You can't raise it when it is low.
Right. But we can lower it without permission from the township, that's correct.
Well, I think they would be very happy.
Well.
As a member of one of those townships.
Yeah, but if you're also the person who's owning and operating this ambulance service, and somebody says, okay, yeah, we're just gonna lower it this rate, you, I mean, you're not gonna be able to lower any lower than what you can actually agree.
Right.
Right, right.
I mean, I just wanna make sure. I saw Mike's mind over there thinking, like, oh, crank these puppies over.
No, well, I, I don't, I don't think.
No, he's gonna put a bid.
I don't think we can, we can be prudent fiduciaries if we're not, at least, I don't know how we determine, I mean, how do we say?
This is how we determine it, by bidding on it. That's the only way we have to determine price.
If they're successful and they bank a million bucks, is that right?
Yes, if nobody else would do it for less.
Right. Okay, I, I'm, you're starting to make me see, I, I'm not.
I, the other thing I'm questioning is like, if they're bidding it for a certain price and we actually do this out over five years, what, what do we do for them the next year, the next year, the next year as far as?
That's what I was saying, Dale, they're, they're gonna have to put that, we're gonna have to have it set up where they can.
They can ask for a percent increase.
Or, or tell, or put, they wanna present right now.
Right.
Yeah, or not. That's why, that goes kinda, that's why I didn't mean their review, that goes back.
Well, it's a bid for five years.
The bid is for five years. If they're saying, you know what, we're gonna do this, if our max is now three nineteen, if they're gonna say, we'll do it for three hundred thousand dollars for the next five years, okay, then they're, all they're getting is three hundred thousand dollars for the next five years, if, if I'm understanding that right.
Well, again, this is the, the bid proposal that'll be sent out, but once we accept a bid, then hopefully we'll have a contract that will address all that.
The levy is increasing, their levy could increase roughly three to four percent a year. If they said, we want the max levy, they'd have a built-in, I mean, that's not guaranteed every year.
But that's what's happened.
Right.
That's what's, right.
Right, and that is going.
Yeah, it's going up a hundred thousand.
Actually, that's the way our contractor had one of them, that they got the max levy.
That, that's what I was wondering, Ben. I think that, that's what we had to figure out.
It said they got twenty cents per hundred. That's exactly what it said.
That, you answered my question then.
But the contract will be more detailed than this, and it will address issues such as one party breaks the contract.
Okay.
The ramifications, and back to Jeff's idea, the bond.
Well, let's, let's all, let's kinda all disagree and be all ready here. If we get two years down the road and these guys say, we're bankrupt, see, what are we gonna do?
Well, we're responsible.
Right, I mean, I, I mean, we, because the guy that's in business now, if he doesn't get it, he's probably not gonna be waiting for two years to, to say, oh, I'll, I'll, I'll come in.
Jeff, what, what's the bond amount, are you thinking? Because I'd like to make a couple of calls.
Well, I don't know what it costs to, to operate the business. Number one.
Because the cost about what the levy has.
We shouldn't, the bonding amount should be.
Can we tell you what it costs?
A fourth of them, right? Because we're only gonna be paying a fourth at a time, and they're only gonna be able to leave a city.
Well, let's just say worst possible. In two years, they, they sell all their equipment, they're gone. There's no equipment. There's no way we could set up and operate a business with the hundred we've got and a hundred and fifty thousand. There's just no way we could do it.
In two weeks.
Or that, or more. I mean, it's just, and I'm not sure how.
We just have to find somebody and a party and contract it up.
Right. I'm not sure how to answer the question, Dale, because I don't know exactly what we're bonding. Are we bonding operation for so many months?
Yeah, I think so.
And then that would be the answer, but I don't know what it costs to operate the service.
Well, I'm, I'm saying your starting point is your levy.
Well, yeah.
But again, I, I could've called Pravina years ago and said, hey, what's it costing to run? And that's probably before privacy laws were as strict as they are now, and they could've told me to go, go jump.
Right.
Same thing with Dee and Eric. I never, never asked them, because it wasn't my right to ask them, like, you know, you making any money or not? If, if they weren't making any money, I'm quite sure I would've heard from them, but, but nobody's banking a million dollars on it that I can know.
Wouldn't suspect it, just. Just keeping up on equipment.
It's, you know, it's a low margin. It's like farming, isn't it?
I was thinking the same thing.
I don't know, maybe the levy. Trying on up, but I just, I just.
Maybe the levy is a dirty.
That was smooth, I slid it out there though.
Does that at least give us?
My, my stunt dance better than yours.
That would give us about a half million. That's what it's important maybe to pay out.
Eric, you wanna do it?
Yeah, just something to think about on item, item eleven, under other terms. You can't mandate in a government contract how they spend government tax money for private purpose. You're mandating that they do things for private agencies, and that violates the constitution.
Oh, eleven.
Okay.
I understand the, the concept and intent. I think Eric probably does most of that anyway, but if you put it in a contract.
He, he does it, and he, he just put it in there that that's what he would do. What he, everything in here is what he's, he's already, already doing. And the state's attorney's response was, and he didn't want an ideal, idealistic contract, and I wrote back, this is not idealistic, this is realistic, this is.
I'm just looking at it from the flip side from.
You just objected to the first paragraph?
If someone wants to, well, if you look at the agencies that are on there, you're, you're requiring public tax money to be used for private purpose in, in writing. And when you do it in writing, now you've created a potential issue. If he wants to do it because that's just what he does, that's his choice. You're mandating that he do it.
The same thing on the second paragraph, the contractor should employ a majority of the workforce. Well, what if, what if A B C from Cincinnati gets this and everybody lives over there? I mean, you know what I'm saying?
I don't even, I'm not so sure the second one you could even.
I, I don't think that's enforceable, really, but no.
What about the last two? I think the last two are very important.
They're important, but you can't mandate the spending of public money for private purpose. And to say you're gonna train, use public money to train everybody for CPR, it's a great idea that you're spending public money for private purpose, and you can't do that.
Pick a note on that and ask the state's attorney to read it.
Is that where they're saying they'll, that, that they're really doing their private monies to do this stuff? Is that an issue?
I mean, they could do it all they want.
That, that's what I'm, but I'm saying is like, even as a part of their contract with a public entity, could they say, this is a part of what we will do out of our private monies and list these things?
They just have to be able to differentiate it, and then the public should be able to identify, where was our three hundred thousand dollars spent? How did you spend it?
But, but technically, I wonder if they would like, wanna say, even under other terms.
Anybody that ran ambulance service would be, be available with all these things, and they just would be, right?
Well, if they're smart, they'll be there, because that's where something's gonna happen.
We could, we could ask them and ask them to consider as a public, to be. We would expect them to cooperate with the events that are.
But there are other services that are out there that are doing this, and it's written in our contract that they'll be paid to do it, which must be all right, but we're, we're not paying.
No, no, just because it sounds all right or they're doing it doesn't mean.
I mean, they're doing it.
I know, a lot, there's been a lot that's been done.
When, when you see an ambulance sitting at most other events outside of this county, they're paid to.
It's smart business for the ambulance company, 'cause they're gonna be there for the call and, and that's part of their community service. I think Alan makes a great point, that they just differentiate that public funds aren't going to be used for private purpose, period, that's all.
Right.
It just leaves, leaves a door open for someone to come back in the county.
See what he, he didn't mention. I, I already have been going over this.
Football game, right, should be between ambulance service and, and the high school. The football game issue should be an issue between the ambulance service and the school district.
That's true. All right, let's go over the last one. The last one's very important. I don't know why that can't be the mutual aid request.
No, that's.
Well, that's already mandated by nine-one-one emergency service requirements, and we all have intergovernmental agreements and mutually varying.
Yeah, they have this aspect, yeah.
Anything else on this? Are we, are we almost in agreement?
Yeah, I didn't realize that rent thing was this big a deal, but.
I don't care either way on that, whether they own it or they rent it.
They're gonna either make a go of it or they're not. We just need to make sure that if they don't, that we've got an answer, 'cause I guarantee you, who's gonna get the blame for it?
Mike Elts.
Yeah, I spell A G L T S L E Y.
All right, I'll try to get back with the state's attorney and get you another revise.
Thank you for your work on this. I appreciate it. Just important.
I have kind of a question that hasn't, that, this board won't have an answer to, and that's why there wasn't some kind of a, a group or a board made up of the townships where we didn't, all we did was levy what they asked us to, you know, a board of them townships that was doing what we're doing now for the ambulance.
We had that. We had the Emmett's, that's how I first got involved.
Yeah, but there wasn't the township. There wasn't one, some person from each one of them township.
Well, it was just never set up.
Well, and you brought a little valid point in our conversation. There was no expertise there. There was, you know, there was a bunch of people that were good people, but they didn't know anything about ambulance, and, and I think that's something we need to discuss. I think this should be run just like the health board. I think we should have a group of people that have some expertise and some.
There's, there's nothing to run anymore, because that ambulance is a private ambulance. Only thing we could decide is what we're deciding now, and that is if somebody bids on it and gets the best price for the taxpayers involved.
And the best service for the best price.
Right, right, and the best service, yeah.
As a board though, you don't get, you don't have to periodically visit this over a period of five years on a, on a five annual basis? There's not issues that come up that you had to make decisions on?
Only if they're not performing according to their contract, otherwise we have no, no input. There was more of a need for the ambulance board.
Well, we ran it.
Well, when the county owned it, when the hospital ran it, there was further a need, because when the ambulance, when the, when the hospital allergies, this, the board was basically charged by something else, and the ambulance board did that. But since it's been contracted like this, I really don't see a need for the ambulance board, but Mike's right, there was no one on the ambulance board. We didn't have doctors or nurses and paramedics. My analogy is, my personal opinion, we need an airport advisory board, just because of that. We need people that have some background of aviation business to advise this board as far as I can go. I'm totally on board with that, but as far as an ambulance board anymore, I.
I didn't realize how much we had to administer, right? I'm, you've made a valid point. Once we get past this.
Yeah, once you have the contract.
Five years.
We're out of the game for five years unless there's.
Hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully, right.
Yeah. Okay.
Anything else?
Yes, I would like to move that we go into closed session for appointments and deployment and compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of public body pending litigation in the setting of price for sale and/or lease of property owned by the body politic or public body.
Second.
Did Augie have anything? Yeah, we didn't ask.
Your what?
Augie, kind of clerk.
Well, I can do it afterwards, unless you wanna do it now. It's out of order, but how you wanna do it.
We need to vote on that.
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both, same sign.
Dale, would you stay?